Good afternoon. This is the caucus meeting for October 22, 2025. Presiding Officer of the Council, my lady Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board in the city clerk's office and on the city's website indicating that today's meeting is being held in the council chamber, City Hall, 260 High Street, at 5:30 PM. Right now is 5:42. The council meeting will follow the caucus and close session. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz Batista, present.
Councilwoman Morales, present.
Councilwoman Peralta, present.
Councilwoman Puccio, present.
Council President Tejeda, present.
Before we start, I will invite everybody for a moment of silence. We have lost a few people this week and between last week and this week that are key individuals for our community and also family of our council members. So I would like a moment of silence for our Louis Perez Jimenez, the director of the water department. Also, then our Renee Skelton passed away. She was a civic activist and also part of the historian commission. Also, I know our councilwoman Cruz just lost her great-grandmother today, and our councilman Puccio lost his aunt. So I would like a moment of silence for all of them and keep them in our prayers and their family. Thank you. Okay, I know we have some presentations that are not on the agenda, and we should start with that. I think SMR should come up and kind of present our our number one seniors and give us a little history about it. You want to do it or the maid?
Is it all? All right. Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
So, we're super excited to be here this evening. Thank you, council, for having us. And so, we're here to recognize two of our seniors. The Office on Aging, I will say, has been increasing a lot in a lot of active senior engagement, and there's been a lot of different opportunities. And so, two of the reasons why we're here this evening is because we're recognizing two of our seniors who marked in two different types of contests. So, one of them is the Middlesex County Senior Arts Contest, and this showcases individuals aged 60 and older across the county with many categories from painting, photography. And one of our seniors scored first place in non-professional sculpture. Here is a, you know, his work. And also, a second senior, one of our other seniors, who scored second place in billiards in the New Jersey Senior Olympics, which is a statewide held event in Woodbridge that brings together over thousands of seniors for different categories, participating in over 20 sports. So, very excited. You know, thank you again for your support in making these programs happen. The New Jersey Senior Olympics, we were able to sponsor for our seniors. We had about seven who participated. And our billiards team is growing, so it's really exciting. And so, we're really honored that we had two who represent Perthian Boy, and they give Perthian Boy pride. So, that's really exciting, and we're very proud of them. And these programs, they celebrate the creativity, right? They, the help, the active and engagement, the spirit of our community, right? Like, what is it about? And they make us proud. So, we're excited to recognize them. Thank you for our leadership, Diane Roman, and for, you know, there's, I always say teamwork makes a dream work. And so, there's always a lot of different ideas flowing. And also, our Office on Aging staff, Marisol's here this evening. And yeah, it's all a And yeah, it's all collaborative, you know, an effort to make sure that we're recognizing them and to make sure that we have as many opportunities as possible. So, we're really excited.
Are they here?
Yes.
I think they should come up.
Absolutely. So, we have William Torres. And we have Antonio Best. So, in case you're wondering, Antonio Best, he earned second place in the age group of 70 to 75 for a billiards competition statewide, New Jersey Senior Olympics.
Yes.
And William Torres, who is our expert on sculpture, because I have many in my office. We all, I think everybody in the office, in the Human Services has something, a little special piece of artwork. But this one that was recognized first place was our Alexander Jankowski Community Center. So, congratulations. I'll pass the mic over to the mayor.
Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And first and foremost, I just want to thank the council president and the entire council for allowing us to do this presentation at such short notice. These are two outstanding seniors at our community center. And I want to give kudos to the entire staff, you know, leading with our Director of Human Services, Diane Roman, supervising Isamar Peiano, and the entire staff. Marisol is here, along with Yvette, J.C., Hector, they're doing an amazing job. Actually, I believe now we have more seniors than ever, right? It continues to grow. So, that says a lot about how all of you are doing with the seniors and with our community. So, thank you to all of you and to Mr. Torres and Mr. Best. Congratulations, and thank you for representing the city of Perth Amboy very well. Mr. Torres, I believe now you're going to be competing on the state level, right? So, we're rooting for you.
Yes, yes.
Congratulations. And with that said, you know, it's my honor to present a memorial citation to both of you for your outstanding work and for representing the city of Perth Amboy with pride and with a lot of love and heart. Thank you to both of you, and if you please come forward. And Diane, Marisol, anyone else from the staff is here, please come up.
Congratulations. At this moment, if you don't mind, I will take a picture with these amazing individuals.
So, we have a few members from the billiards team that are here to support Antonio. So, they'd like, we have our co-captain Angel, please come on up and join us.
Here's your chance to get famous.
You can run first.
The council?
Yes. One, two. We're all in here.
Wait, wait, wait. Hold the phone. Thank you, thank you so much.
Congratulations, you watch again, congrats.
Hello?
If I can just say something more quickly, Mr. Torres picked up the arts during COVID, and he just was bored, and he started working, and he actually started making these pieces from, you know, boxes, Amazon boxes. And today, he's done statues, he did the Twin Towers, he's done so many things. He actually did a rendition of City Hall. And our goal is to, next spring, for Older Americans Fund, to have an art exhibit, not only of the seniors that come to the Jankowski Center, but also seniors throughout the city. We serve seniors in this city, whether you come to Olive Street or not, whether you're homebound or you're more active. Age is only but a number, and when people come to the Jankowski Center, they're getting so much life. It's contagious. So, thank you again for, you know, recognizing them, their efforts, to the entire team. To Isamar's point, things don't happen by themselves. It is people who drive change, and our staff is definitely driving change in the people that we serve. So, thank you.
Thank you. Diane.
Once again, thank you, this.
Diane, you want to take that? Because I don't want that to do damage.
You can leave it there?
Leave it there? Okay.
All right. Thank you, everyone, once again. And Isamar, congratulations. And I'm not sure if we're going to see you again anytime soon, right?
Yeah, she looks like she's ready to go.
Congratulations, and God bless.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, we have another presentation, which is the PAVIC, Perth Amboy Business Improvement Corporation, who's presenting their budget for next year. Yolanda Flores will present. Thank you. Everyone has a package of what she's going to present. Who has it? Oh, she does? In your pocket?
As he said so, I can greet everyone and thank you for your time. I'm Yolanda Flores, the Executive Director of the Perth Amboy Business Improvement Corporation. I'm also glad to be here to present our calendar year 2026 proposed budget and share important updates with you. I'm also looking forward to collaborating with all of you to build on the great work already being done, to find new ways to support and strengthen our local businesses.
Give him a little time.
In the meantime, I could look at the sculpture. It's not curious.
Yeah, I know.
It's really good. So cute. Do you have it? You would like me just to discuss it in general, and then when the slide comes in, it's a quick eight slides, so it's not very difficult.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes.
I mean, I just wanted the public to kind of take, have a visual. I mean, we can wait a little bit if you want, if it's not going to take her long.
No, I leave it up to you.
Okay, so let's wait.
With the map? Currently, our Perth Amboy Business Improvement map consists of 1,041 properties, and they're comprised of the four A's, four B's, four C's, the 15 S, and Class 1. The total estimated budget for 2026 is $2,130,952.58, which includes adjustments based on the projected assessor's calculations. The key focus area remains to investments in streetscape improvements, lighting upgrades, sidewalk repairs, facade grants to improve the visual appeal of businesses and to attract foot traffic, programs designed to retain, attract, support businesses throughout grants, training, promotional efforts, ensuring effective operations, compliance, financial transparency to maximize the impact of every dollar spent. Fiscal responsibility, the budget aims to maintain a balance between the necessary improvements and prudent financial management to sustain long-term growth. Every investment is strategically planned to provide measurable benefits to the business community. Here is how our budget is distributed to support key initiatives. Capital and visual improvements, $1,690,996.6, which is 47.9% of the budget, to enhance the overall functionality, aesthetics, accessibility, and cultural vibrancy of the business district. Attraction and support, $427,500, which is 12.1% dedicated to marketing efforts, promotional events, visitor incentives to support and sustain local businesses while fostering economic activity. Administration is $362,461.92, which is 10%. Funding allocated for management, operational support, professional services, oversight to ensure effective execution of the PAVIC programs and initiatives. The municipal partnership is $950,000, which is 26.9%. Through this partnership, PAVIC works closely with municipal departments, including Department of Public Works and Police Department, to coordinate services, leverage city resources, and ensure that the district needs are effectively addressed. Uncollected reserves is $100,000, which is 2.8%. It's reserved for unforeseen expenses for future needs, ensuring that the organization remains adaptable and financially secure. Up next, you'll see a pie chart that visually breaks down these allocations, giving you a clear picture of how our funds work. First and foremost, I want to thank the board members, our local businesses, for their valuable input through the planning process and administration as it each contributed in shaping this year's budget. In 2026 budget, it's all about investing in our district's growth, supporting businesses, and keeping operations running smoothly for long-term success. Okay, I have it as a different cut. Anyway, so, this is Edible Jersey. We've invested in quarterly advertising to really bring business from the outside. We want to attract business into our city. And the winter holiday one is about to come out soon. So, again, we hope that our investment brings visitors to enjoy our city. Before I go to why approve the budget, I also wanted to mention one of the key things, our facade grants and grand openings. We work with the owners to promote their businesses. We engage with professional video companies to create short videos of the grand openings that we share with social media and the business owner, which actually they appreciate immensely because it's really us investing in their business and boosting their coming into town. And why approve this budget? It's the direct benefits to residents and businesses, investments to the infrastructure and public services, and it reflects the community-focused growth and responsibility. And so, this is our calendar year 2026 budget proposal. Thank you. Have any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Yolanda about this?
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. Thank you for all you've been doing. I think you've been doing a great job with, you know, the topic. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Thank you for coming and presenting, Yolanda. It's a great opportunity for the citizens of Perth Amboy, or the residents, to understand what PAVIC is doing and with great effort to help our businesses grow and to continue bringing other visitors to come in and be here.
And ultimately, it's a collaboration. Everybody in this room is part of this project, part of our growth, so I think everyone is well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Go to the ordinance. Public hearing, three minutes maximum per speaker, per ordinance. The number one, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped persons, ordinance number 380-85, and amendments adopted July 2, 1985, also known as Chapter 255A, seek of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy, and this is about deletions. Number two, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, to amend an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy entitled... ordinance fixing and establishing a schedule of salaries and salary ranges and increments for officers and employees of the City of Perth Amboy, ordinance number 218-79, as amended, adopted July 3rd, 1979. And this is for the FOP Lodge Number 80, January 1st, 2025, through December 31st, 2028. Reports: Fallum Barczewski Tax Collector submitted the report for collections for the month of September 2025. Ordinance: First reading, an ordinance of the City of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled, an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for use by handicapped persons, ordinance number 380-85, and amendment adopted July 2nd, 1985, also known as Chapter 255A seek of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy, and this is about deletions. Resolutions: R421-1025, authorizing accumulated leave payout to Edgar Troche in the amount of $8,000. I'm missing a number there.
Yeah.
So what is there?
Let me look it up, hold on.
Okay.
$768.
$768.
And 47 cents.
Okay, so $8,768 with 47 cents?
Yes, that's right.
Based on the retirement on October 1st, 2025. R422-1025, authorizing a three-year contract for computer payroll service to ADP, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $102,000. R423-1025, authorizing refund of a restoration fee in the amount of $1,250 to Paul Martinez for property located at 315 Washington Street, Block 166, Lot 25. R424-1025, authorizing a refund in the amount of $125 to Anthony A. Hooffat, a tenant, for the return of his key deposit for three keys with the Perth Amboy Harbor Marina. R425-1025, authorizing a contract with Model One Commercial Vehicles, Inc., for a 2026 All-Star bus through the HGAC Contract BTO1-21, product code ZCF, in the amount not to exceed the sum of $133,395. R426-1025, authorizing settlement of workers' compensation litigation entitled Sylvia Montalvo Moya versus City of Perth Amboy, CP Number 2023-19229, in the total amount of $183,408. R427-1025, executing a contract with the court-appointed special advocate, Casa of Middlesex County, in the amount of $25,000 in accordance with the 51st Program Year 2025 Community Development Block Grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended, commencing June 1st, 2025, and terminating May 31st, 2026. R428-1025, executing a contract with the Raritan Bay Area YMCA Center for Support, Success, and Prosperity in the amount of $25,000 in the accordance with the 51st Program Year 2025 Community Development Block Grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended, commencing June 1st, 2025, and terminating May 31st, 2026. R429-1025, executing a contract with the Jewish Renaissance Foundation Alternative Education Institute, AEI, in the amount of $25,000 in accordance with the 51st Program Year 2025 Community Development Block Grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended, commencing June 1st, 2025, and terminating May 31st, 2026. R430-1025, executing a contract with the Perth Amboy Housing Authority in the amount of $25,000 in accordance of the 51st Program Year 2025 Community Development Block Grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended, commencing June 1st, 2025, and terminating May 31st, 2026. R431-1025, accepting a grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, for fiscal year 2025 in the amount of $687,303.10 for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and $490,303.10 with 10 cents for the Home Investment Partnership Program Home. R432-1025, executing a contract with the Puerto Rican Association for the Human Development, Inc., PRAD, Tenant-Based Rental Assistant Program in the amount of $91,931.83 in accordance with the 51st Program Year 2025 Home Investment Partnership Program from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development created by the National Affordable Housing Act of 1990, commencing June 1st, 2025, and terminating May 31st, 2026, NAH-A. R433-1025, executing a contract with the Jewish Renaissance Foundation Tenant-Based Rental Assistant Program in the amount of $91,931.83 in accordance with the 51st Program Year 2025 Home Investment Partnership Program from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development created by the National Affordable Housing Act of 1990, commencing June 1st, 2025, and terminating May 31st, 2026. R434-1025, executing a contract with the United Way of Central Jersey Tenant-Based Rental Assistant Program in the amount of $21,931.83 in accordance with the 51st Program Year 2025 Home Investment Partnership Program from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development created by the National Affordable Housing Act of 1990, commencing June 1st, 2025, and terminating May 31st, 2026, NAH-A. R435-1025, executing a contract with the Raritan Bay Area YMCA Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program in the amount of $91,931.83 in accordance with the 51st Program Year 2025 Home Investment Partnership Program from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development created by the National Affordable Housing Act of 1990, commencing June 1st, 2025, and terminating May 31st, 2026, NAH-A. R436-1025, authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, in the amount of $125,984 for the 2025 FEMA Port Security Grant Program list, the cost match of $31,496, bringing the amount to $94,488 for the replacement of the thermal imaging camera on Marine 5.
Counsel President, I'm sorry, is the chief here? Chief Malin?
No.
Malin?
Malin.
I understand.
Oh, okay, sure. If you can just explain what this is about, thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, Chief Malin was unable to make it. He's at a Valor Awards Dinner this evening. So I spoke with him about it and he asked me to, if any questions came up, to fill it in. What this is, is the thermal imaging. You may refer to it as FLIR, Forward-Looking Infrared. And this is on their marine vessel to be able to look at distances and see if there's any objects in water, or objects on land, or anything else that would give a heat signature. The original one was moved over from the original Marine 5, which is in 2006. They brought it over to the new vessel that they got a couple of years ago, and it has failed. So this would replace that. They didn't have the money at the time, so this is to replace that particular device on that vessel.
And the money's coming from the FEMA grant?
Yes, plus the match. I'm sorry, the match would be coming from capital, I believe you said. It was the matching funds is where that would be coming from.
All right, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the normal port security grant that we get every year that we switch between PD and FIRE every other year.
Thank you.
You okay? All right, and R437-1025 approving the introduction of the 2026 Perth Amboy Business Improvement District Budget. We had some communications this time, and closed session resolution, R420-1025, authorizing a closed session at the October 22nd, 2025 council meeting to discuss the following. Number one, workers' compensation litigation, a Sylvia Montalvo Moya, it's misspelled, versus City of Perth Amboy, CP Number 2023-19229. I need a motion?
Madam President?
Yes.
Can we also add personnel for that?
Okay, we can add personnel also to the closed session. Anything else? Okay, I need a motion.
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Cruz Batista?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejera?
Yes. Public portion, three minutes maximum per speaker. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, it's open to the public for any, anything, any matter.
Good evening. Phyllis Castillo, 544 Gate. You know, the last time I was here with you guys about the situation about the park and the loud music and the racing. Right now, I spoke to the captain yesterday, came to my job site, and they're putting some systems in for the people that's racing cars in the neighborhood. So he told me to give them a chance to get all the data on this, which I don't mind, you know, giving the time. But I still want, I still want the park gate closed because I have, the last time I was here, all the calls, I've been calling from the police department, I locked everything, everything this time when I came back, which I have now. And it's not, it's not getting better. They put a camera yesterday in the park, which is good. But that's second story. People from going inside the driveway, parking and smoking, you know, all these other things they do there. But I still, I'm going to work with the police department on this situation, but I still want the gate closed. When I first bought this house in 2012, the gate used to be closed. Nobody's coming at the dawn, I mean, dusk, when the park was closed. So I'm here to say I'm going to cooperate with the police department, the captains, which is a nice person, and the officers. They're going to have something, you know, building up, but I still want the park closed. I want the gate back up. The gate's there, they can have somebody close it right after the games are finished. Whatever they're doing, whatever recreation they're doing after the park closes, I want the gate back up. That's all I'm in for. But I'm going to work with the police department right now. And which I appreciate that they, you know, they came to my job site. You know, I gave them my time, they gave me their time. And we're going to partnership on this to get this situation for the car music, the racing at nighttime, and all the nine yards, okay? So another thing I wanted to bring up. Captain Turan, Turan is a name I don't know, I just met him for the first time. Very nice gentleman, okay? I'm going to work with him on this situation, which I feel that it's going to be a good bond to get this done for the senior citizens with all this loud music, which is out of control. All right, and I'm still going to fight for this, the speed limit on the Brunswick Avenue to be changed back to 25 miles an hour, which it was when I first moved here, it turned to 30, and it's becoming a disaster. A lot of accidents there. So that's the comment, that's what it has to do with you guys. I'll fight the counter on that one too. So I'm just watching the clock. Anyway, I appreciate you guys' time, and I'll be here next time.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief?
I have a question.
Yeah, we both have questions.
Okay, go ahead.
For transparency, why are the gates not closed? I know the answer, but can we just say it out loud?
We normally don't handle gates, not that I'm passing a buck or that would normally be handled by the recreation department when games are over, games are done, or those types of things. I don't remember the last time they were closed, gentlemen, it's 12 years ago where I grew up in that neighborhood. I don't particularly remember when they were closed, last or open last or what have you. I was up there the other day, I was seeing a lot of the issues you were speaking of. As I mentioned, the camera towers there. I also looked at the gates, they are operational, they work and so forth. And I have been speaking with Director Ortiz and Matthew also, Director.
What about parks, maybe more specific parks? Are we allowed to close parks after certain times?
Absolutely, by ordinance, they are closed. The only thing that I could see that would be potential issue is someone who was parked there and now the recreation staff came to close the gates. Then we have to deal with that car there. Now we close the gates, we tow that car. We, you know, we can't get in. So that's the only issue that we were talking about if that were to occur, where if someone maybe came to the game and went to dinner somewhere or something with a family member, they're back and now the gates are closed. How are we going to be able to get that individual out?
Yes.
Is there any signage that the park is closed for a certain time? A clear signage that so that way they won't be there? So that, well, we can...
That they won't leave it there.
That they won't leave it there. So there's, is there clear signage there that the park is closed? And if you get stuck in here?
For that park, there's not, because we haven't been closing the gates. There is a sign, I did not take a photograph of, but there's a sign that says 7:00 AM, I believe to 10:00 PM, parks are closed after 10:00 PM. It says in English and Spanish, and gives the ordinance number. Right as you're driving in that driveway, there's a red sign here that will say that. So if this were to occur, they are able to close the gates, then yes, absolutely, I would say let's put additional signage, you know, hey, you're stuck. After 10 o'clock, if you park there, you're not getting out. Whatever I'm going to say, I mean, I would give the phone people's vehicles, I may have to park there, but you may not be able to get out until the morning or something like that.
Okay.
You just have to keep that in mind that that may be a concern for the citizens.
Well, as long as there's a sign, a clear sign is that this gate's going to close at this time, you know, and that's their responsibility, you know.
So can someone, who would look into that?
Yeah, who would be responsible for that? Would that be parks?
Mr. Ortiz?
Mr. Ortiz?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since you're up here, I'm sorry, I apologize. Did you have some?
No, 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 it was the same question.
Oh, okay. Since I have you up here, I might as well ask you now. Just had an incident, actually, I'm driving down Market Street, and just wanted to know what is the plans for these kids driving in their bicycles? I mean, literally coming right at me purposely, you know, and I'm like trying to swerve away from them so that I would avoid it. And it's a whole group of them. And I know this has been happening around town. So I just wanted to know, what is the plan? Is there a plan to, you know, to stop this thing from happening? Are their bikes getting taken away or whatever it is? It's, you know, it's got to stop. It's dangerous what they're doing, you know, not only for the driver, but also for the, for the kids that are, there are like maybe 20, 25 of them driving, and, you know, it's just blows my mind. Just wanted to know what the plan is to, you know, hopefully. just, blows my mind, just wanted to know what the plan is to, you know, hopefully stop this.
Bikes, like?
Yeah, the kids on bikes, yeah. They're, they're young kids, teenagers.
I have to tell you, I was in Metuchen, and they did the same thing. The same thing, I was coming from Metuchen, and it was a group of kids doing the same thing. It's just something that, I don't know how this is, go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't...
Counsel President, you're absolutely right, this actually came up at our county chief's meeting the other day, and there was at least five or six different chiefs that chimed in from different smaller municipalities and so forth, that basically said the same, oh yeah, I had that, they went from this town to that town to that town. So it's certainly not an issue that's just, you know, occurring here. It's a multi-phase approach, actually. Over the last couple of days, last weekend, this week, our traffic unit, as well as our special services unit and community policing, were at the high school, addressing individuals coming there without helmets. And explaining to them, you need to be done, you need to have helmets and so forth, warnings, issuing the warnings and so forth, e-bikes, regular bikes, those types of things, and handing out flyers and explaining to them, basically. They went there on Monday, and they had probably 70-plus percent compliance with helmets on the handlebars, not on their heads.
Well, at least the handlebars are connected.
So that was the next phase, phase of education, listen, not any good on the, on the handlebars, on your head and so forth. So slowly, we are starting to see that, that adherence to the rules and so forth, and not riding tubes and so forth. Interestingly enough, just as I was pulling up here, there was an individual driving by with two people on moped, I did a check, and I stopped, and spoke with them, got them, although they were adults, and one had a helmet, the other didn't, so I addressed, you know, those individuals. So it's regularly happening that we're interfacing with those people. What becomes tough is, and, you know, with this incident, of course, we had a couple of years ago, you have that pack of 25, there are juveniles, or even, even the younger adults, so there are 25 of those or so of those people coming, when you start addressing them. And, you know, our tactic is, for the most part, not to give them attention, because then it just adds to it, they try to do other things. What we do is to burn traffic away, try to break them up to go different roads and so forth, and, and basically take traffic away from them, so they don't have that audience anymore, let's say, to do the acts and the crazy things and so forth that they do. But it becomes very difficult, because a situation like that can escalate very quickly into, you know, into negativity. So it's a delicate balance how we have to, how we have to deal with that. The best that we do, and we also have other avenues, when we have them together, we will follow them, we'll know where they go, and then we see them when they, when they stop, and that's when we're able to, to inter, interact with that. There are some statistics that we'll be putting out shortly about some bicycles that we have confiscated and so forth, when it gets past that, when it gets past the multiple warnings, or the deliberate things that may be doing, quite frankly, very dangerous things that they may be doing.
Right, right.
Come on down ahead, boys, with your parents, and we're gonna explain what went on and so forth, and you can get your bike back.
So the bikes are getting confiscated from at this point?
There are, there are some that happen, yes. Certainly the illegal ones, or the ones that don't, that are motor vehicles, that they don't have registered, or they're not fitting, you have it in different classes and so. If it's immediate, then it will be the confiscations.
Yeah, I'm just concerned, the safety of, you know, overall, the kids and everybody else, though.
This appears to be the time that they're doing, right, when they get back to school, right in the October timeframe, before it gets too cold, this appears to be countywide, statewide, when you're having most of these incidents occurring.
So, I don't know if you've done this already, I haven't seen it. I personally like seeing the kids outside in their bikes. I don't want to see a squad of them, but I like to see children outside, riding their bikes. But I remember, I think it was last year when the high school was opening, you were putting out, you know, like promotion of how to cross the street correctly and things like that. I just quickly thought of maybe doing something like that with the bicycles, maybe collaborating with the schools. I don't know, maybe in their morning, I forget what they're called, like the morning meetings, where they screen, livestream videos or something during homeroom, maybe playing it there, they're not all going to listen, but maybe trying to educate them on what's appropriate and what's not, and safety versus what's not safe. That's just an idea. I don't know if you've done that, or have you guys spoken about that?
We have tried to have some flyers and so forth that would be given out to students and so forth, and interface with the, with the school system, that with, not many positive results at this point.
Yeah, I don't think flyers are very positive, maybe a, I don't know, a video or something.
We are open and happy to do any kind of presentation whatsoever, we'd love to go into the schools to be able to do that. When we get there for the dare, we do that, that's great, that's why, we would certainly be able to, and willing to do any of that, if we can, if we have the avenue to be able to help us to do that. We'd certainly love to have our community policing officers in there, and addressing the students on a, on a larger scale basis than just one on one.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Say your name, your address.
Name is Roman, Elizabeth Ray. Yeah, so, good evening, members of the council. I'm here because I gave petition to Councilwoman Cruz in regards to the Immigrant Trust Act. So a group of us who are concerned residents of Perth Amboy, New Jersey, went around, Perth Amboy gathered signatures, over 330 signatures, supporting the Immigrant Trust Act, essentially demanding, if not requesting, a resolution out of the city council, in order to pressure the state government, the state government to pass the Immigrant Trust Act, which is actually more urgent than ever. The Immigrant Trust Act would actually protect the residents of Perth Amboy, who happen to be undocumented, from having their information being used by ICE. Information that would be gathered from essential services, including emergency services, that could potentially be used by ICE, in order to detain and deport residents of Perth Amboy, New Jersey. As we know, this is a growing concern throughout the country, as the Trump administration is increasing deportations, to the point he's funding ICE more than previous, previous administrations. Therefore, I ask, along with over 330 residents of Perth Amboy, who signed this petition, that the council presents a resolution and votes, and votes on it, in order to pressure the state government to pass the Immigrant Trust Act, so the residents of Perth Amboy can be safe from deportation, which by the way, happens for any reason, I mean, not because they're criminals, but the fact is that a large number of people who are being deported right now have no criminal background at all, and are being sent to essentially concentration camps, even to El Salvador, which is essentially a modern-day penal colony at Seacol. So therefore, it's important the city council protects those residents from deportations and many other human rights violations that occur as a result of these deportations, by passing a resolution that would pressure the state government, the state government to pass the Immigrant Trust Act and protect our residents in Perth Amboy. Other cities has already done it, and Brunswick has already passed a resolution, Princeton has passed a resolution. Therefore, it's important and imperative that the city that has 81% population of Latin American descent, to actually pass this, not only to, not only to actually be a frontrunner in New Jersey and throughout the country, in the fight against Trump and his deportation machine, but also because the fact is, this community is arguably one of the biggest targets of ICE in the entire country, due to the demographic of the people who live here. So please do the right thing, write a resolution, and write a resolution supporting the Immigrant Trust Act, and please pass it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes.
You were gonna say.
Hi, my name is Ashley, I live in Room Street, so I'm just gonna read it now.
Uh huh, got you.
So hi, my name is Ashley Ruiz Castañeda, and I am a Perth Amboy resident born and raised. I also want to state that I'm a US citizen. I say this today because we are seeing how this administration is not only targeting undocumented criminal immigrants, but also is targeting people like me. I'm here today to ask you to join Newark, Patterson, Edison, and so many other New Jersey towns, in passing a resolution to support the Immigrant Trust Act. It's important as council members and leaders of our city to provide safety, support for your community. Perth Amboy is made up of predominantly immigrant families, and with the gubernatorial elections coming up, we run the risk of becoming a red state, and we know that Jack Geterelli is not for the people. How will you ensure the protection of families that have helped put you here today?
Thank you. Anyone else?
I want to piggyback off of them. I wanted to actually make a motion, when the time comes, to add that resolution to our next agenda. Just wanted to state that.
I would like to support that as well. I think working in the city and working with the students, you definitely see the impact, and if we're in power for advocacy, why not? And thank you all for advocating and being brave enough, of course, to speak, to speak on it.
Same here.
I'll support that, too.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? I need a motion to go to closed session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? After the closed session, we'll be back for the city council meeting for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I need a motion to come back from closed session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? I need, I need a motion to adjourn the caucus, caucus meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, we're ready to start the city council meeting for October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, council chambers. Presiding Officer of the Council, my lady Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the home news tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted in the bulletin board, in the city clerk's office, and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the council chamber, City Hall, two sixty High Street, right after the caucus enclose session. And right now is seven twenty-five. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Go call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz Batista?
Present.
Councilwoman Morales?
Present.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Present.
Councilman Puccio?
Present.
Council President Tejeda?
Present. Let's stand for the invocation and this.
Let's pray for our residents, for this city, to be safe, to protect their residents, their visitors, and everyone who comes here, and for our governing body to make the right decision for our citizen, and to, also to protect, I pray for the protection of our troops abroad and also the ones here, defending our freedom and also their family. I also want to pray for those who left us that were very active in our community and part of our residents, and may God bless their family. And with that, I'd say, amen.
May your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible, the liberty and justice of all.
Ordinance, public hearing, three minutes maximum per speaker, per ordinance. Number one, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled Anordinance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces for Use by Handicapped Persons, ordinance number three eighty dash eighty-five, an amendment adopted July second, nineteen eighty-five, also known as chapter two fifty-five A, seek of the code of the city of Perth Amboy, and this is about deletions. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Seeing none, none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz Batista?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number two, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, to amend an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy entitled Ordinance Fixing and Establishing a Schedule of Salaries and Salary Ranges and Increments for Officers and Employees of the. the City of Perth Amboy, ordinance number two eighteen dash seventy-nine, as amended, adopted July third, nineteen seventy-nine. This is in reference of FOP Lodge number eighty, from the, the period from January first, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Anybody? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz Batista?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Reports. Number one, Falun Barczeski Tax Collector submitted the reports of collections for the month of September twenty twenty-five. Ordinance, first reading, no public discussion. Number one, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy to amend an ordinance entitled Anordnance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces for Use by Handicapped Persons, ordinance number three eighty dash eighty-five, an amendment adopted July second, nineteen eighty-five, also known as chapter two fifty-five A C of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz Batista?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. All right, look throughout the resolution.
I'm good.
You're good?
Good.
I'm good.
Everybody's good?
I'm good.
Okay, the consent, I need a motion for the consent agenda, which is R four twenty-one ten twenty-five through R four thirty-seven ten twenty-five. I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz Batista?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peralta?
Yes, except for R four three-two ten dash twenty-five, I'm going to be abstaining from that one.
You should have pulled it.
Oh, yeah.
Abstain, okay. Four thirty-two. And Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. All right. Okay, public portion, three minutes maximum per speaker. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? It's open to the public on any matter. Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, council comments, Councilwoman Cruz Batista?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. So, the Office of Aging and of course, all our departments, but based on what we had today, Office of Aging staff, you're doing tremendous. And we see the amazing achievements as well of our seniors, this is amazing to see. And may we continue growing, it's great to know that it's one of the largest seniors that we've had. And on November first, our breast cancer awareness walk will take place. And of course, as always, please keep updated on our city's website. And then, as our council president mentioned earlier, my deepest, deepest condolences to Mr. Jimenez, his family, to the city, you would truly be missed, and to our fellow councilman Pucci as well, my, my condolences, and anyone else here who has lost someone or going through something, many prayers to all of you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Councilwoman Morales?
Just want to say thank you for everyone that was here. Also, just wanted to also offer my consult, excuse me, my condolences to Mr. Jimenez's family, Renee Skelton, Haley, your great, great grandma, a hundred and one years old, God bless her, I mean, celebrate life, actually, right, celebration of life, make she rest in peace, and Kenny Puccio, councilman, my condolences to you and your family. Also, congrats to our seniors, it's so great to celebrate, not only our, you know, we have the, the young adults that come here, we celebrate them, and, you know, for their accomplishments, whether it's sports or anything, it's great to also recognize, you know, our seniors as well. So, good job, great job to Isamar and Diane and the staff of the Office of the Aging. Also, Election Day is two weeks away, just wanted to make sure that everyone has received their ballots, to just please go ahead and, you know, send it out and, you know, go out and vote, early voting is coming up as well, to go out and vote, early voting, and also on the day of Election Day, a very important election. And that's it, and Halloween is coming up, hopefully everyone has a safe and happy Halloween. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Peralta?
So, as we wrap up today's meeting, I just want to thank everyone for being a part of all the positive changes that are happening in our community and all the progress that we have made. October is a month of change in reference to the weather and time and everything going on, and so with those changes come a lot of activities, such as all the fall festivals, all the trunk of treats and all that stuff, so please be safe, but take your children out to enjoy those festivities, and let's just continue to support one another, to continue, to support one another so that the changes can continue to occur because it is visible. So again, thank you so much to everyone who has a part of that because it is important. And I'd like to conclude with my deepest condolences to the Jimenez family and to everyone who has lost a loved one. I know it's really hard to lose someone special in your life, so you are all in my prayers and have a good evening.
Thank you. Councilman Puccio?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Councilwoman Cruz Batista and all, all of you up here. Thank you for the condolences. Condolences to Louis's family, you know, he's going to be missed, you should be, you sitting right there. And, and thank you ladies for always putting up with my shenanigans. And Mr. Keel, you, you are doing an outstanding job.
Yes, you are.
And also, I just want to give a shout out to the clerk, who's always doing a great job, and it goes without saying that Mr. Opus is always on the ball here, and John Luke. No, but thank you, thank you.
I just want to say thank you to everyone who participated tonight, who always take the opportunity to come and be part of this meeting. I also want to thank all the employees of our city, but especially our seniors, the Office of Aging, because they do a great job. I always see all their activities on the social media and how much fun they're having. I am glad that our city has that particular department. But I also want to say thank you to the administration and to all the employees, to our clerks, and, and to all who makes possible that Perth Amboy keeps moving forward. Thank you very much. And my condolences to everyone who lost family members lately, especially to the Perez Jimenez family, and also Renee Skelton. Those were two people who I worked close with, who I was close with, and they were really people who really care for what was going on in our, in our city, and they're going to be missed. Mr. Jimenez was always very polite, very true gentleman every time you ask him a question about the water department or anything, and he was always open to all of us. So, we're going to miss him, and, and I know his family are going through a rough moment right now, but with our prayers, they will feel better, they will never forget, but they will feel a little better as they continue with their mourning. And I just want to tell everybody to have a safe Halloween. Take your children out, enjoy them, and just be safe. And thank you for participating, and I need a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, good night.